...as potential groundwater contamination, mainly controlling products. If you recall back in the early 50s and so, long before my time, but the 50s, we had basically a gas station on every corner. And some of those older gas stations had links, that's what they linked in to soil, so there's areas where when we dig through, we may encounter some contamination. Originally, we thought we'd be able to treat that groundwater with our waste plant away from being under construction. And the type of contamination in there, I don't feel that that's probably the best solution. And the waste staff agreed that that's probably not the best solution for that. So, we did get a price from a night river in order to treat that before it gets discharged into the sanitary, so it was basically clean water at that point. And it's gonna be, right now is a time of material, it's hard to determine how long and how much you are going to need to do for that treatment, because it is so sporadic. It's sometimes in this spot, and then over here, it's not. So, they will have somebody, the state will have somebody on staff, basically testing it to see if it's contaminated or not, and where it can be discharged before we do it. But I wanted to bring it to the council's attention, because it will be a cost, in addition to what we originally had on our project. And it'll be at a time of material type of situation, so that's coming up. Then the other one that we are looking at would be in addition to this change order. When we were doing some construction on the east end of the bridge, we were putting in the new water main, and when they dug down, they actually found an old pipe that extended out into the Mississippi River. We didn't know at the time, we were two feet below where our old water main was going directly on top of one another. How that happened, I'm not sure, because you draw a line on paper where it looks best for current construction, but it was also the right spot, and you know, when they put it in, a few yents ago. And so, we caught that line, and there was quite a bit of water that came in, we didn't know where it was connected to, and so, the Mississippi River was coming into the trench, and they worked about six hours to try to fight that water and get that cap. So, that's another change order that will be coming. That one was about $6,000. The dewatering, I would say a minimum of $20,000 on that one is what it would cost. So, money that we'll end up having to afford, but it's within the contingencies that we estimated, because there no doubt could be things that we haven't or don't know about. There's a couple of coal shoots, those are mind-blowing costs, but there's things that come up throughout construction that just need to be taken care of, and I wanted to make the council aware of them, because those are things that we'll see.
We're testing and treating areas that need it to the ones that don't handle it the way that we planned.
That's correct, yes. Yep.
Golf course event center, John.
Mr. President, we, the last effort to explore, design-build for the golf course was through Gordian, and a builder that they have an agreement with, that's certified to do design-build operations. Gordian Group is certified through Sourcewell to do, design, to manage, design-build, RFPs, and so it meets the state certification for that. We met with the builder and an architect, described the proposed plan, ultimately, again, came back with a price that was outside of our current budget range for what we have funds to allocate to the golf course, and with the proposal set that people have pledged to, to donate. It was about, around a $1.8 million price thing for that. The, I'd say the next step is really a no cost to us, but would be to do a formal solicitation for bids, and see what proposals come back. We wouldn't be obligated to accept them if they are outside of our budget range, but we would be obligated to take the lowest responsible bidder in that solicitation. There's a possibility that this could yield a project within our budget range. They're builder firms on this level, we would certainly establish it with a base bid, and then add, I guess, alternates on top of that, try to give the, at least minimum expectations that we would hope for out of the facility, and then work up from there with bid alternates, so that we could, if possible, select a bid that was within our budget range, and then find a way to fill it out with the other aspects later. After this, if this really isn't feasible, I think the next steps would either be to consider either lowering the proposal, the type of facility that we have, reducing the size and the number of people that it serves, or potentially looking at increasing the budget, so that we could meet that, meet that size of facility. You know, that was a number that we've talked about, that's been proposed, because it fits a niche for our community. Certainly, we recognize that we don't want to be direct competition with a lot of the facilities in town, but there's a need, there's a need to have enough of a space like this. So, it kind of meets, serving the community, conservators, that's a lot of potential to improve our, improve assets for the community, and make a facility that's used on a year-round basis versus just with the golf course right now, serving mostly during the golf season, at very limited times during the golf season. So, I think this would be the next step, and to see where we, what sort of bids we give back, and make a decision, be able to make a decision.
I mentioned this before, I'll bring it up again. I think that it's not the next step, I think the next step is to decide how this space is going to be used. When you go into business, if you're a restaurateur, and you're building a restaurant, then you go into it with a plan. How many, how much is this going to cost me, and how many meals do I need to sell in order to pay for it? And how am I going to get those meals? You know, before we start looking into bids, you know, if you bring in a franchise, and let them take it over, oftentimes, they'll bring in their own dishware, their own flatware, their own glassware, they'll furnish it, they'll decorate it, they'll come in with a plan to make money. If you rent the space to caterers for special occasions, and now you're closing the kitchen for people who want to eat there on a Friday night, it's not available for the person who's going to be there on a Friday night. If you leave the space, if you lease the space to a chef, and he or she can do their own thing, they can have the big 200-person weddings, and they can just have a kitchen with a restaurant where people can go and have, take their wife for a steak on a Friday night. Or, you can hire a kitchen/restaurant manager, who then in turn hires a chef, hires a staff, does the scheduling, you know, and all of that stuff. And we don't have a clue how we're going to run this place. We're running it as a restaurant now, it's serving bar food. Do we want to put up a million and a half dollar building and serve bar food, or do we want a nice restaurant? You know, we don't, we haven't made any of these decisions, and I think to build a building before we know exactly how we're going to do it, is putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to have this discussion, and once we've figured out what we think is the best way for this place, because you know, it should be making money. It should be making money. If you have a restaurant, it should make money. You know, I can't, I didn't go into my business not knowing what I was going to do. I had to have a really good plan. And now, 13 years later, guess what? I had a good plan! It worked! You know, in 13 years, do we want to go back and say, "Oh man, that wasn't a very good plan at all," because we've just, you know, lost another million on top of the million we put into it? You know, I think that this is a really important discussion to be had, before we go any farther. And that's all I have to say.
I would like to say something too. You know, we put out a referendum trying to, try to get a community center, put a vote before the people, and they turned it down. Why is this not brought before the people? This is something they're going to have to spend money on, it's their money. If we put this thing up, it's almost like you need at least a show of community support for it. I would like to see this signal like some kind of votes.
With the donations that you're giving, you have some show of support.
That's donations there, you could have probably got donations for a community center too, if we had a right cast force behind it. But I'm just saying, this is something that the whole city, I feel, should be voting on, not just the people who use the golf course. And it is costing the people money.
And I don't necessarily think it's a bad idea. I mean, obviously, something needs to be done with the clubhouse at the country club, obviously. So, you know, by all means, we need to, we need to do something, and building a new facility is actually a really good idea, but before we know there, we've got to figure out how we're going to run it.
Well, and I, Mr. President, I would just add that, I brought it to the meeting before, that in many strategic planning sessions in the last 20 years, that has been brought up by a lot of the elderly residents, that it would be nice, we're wasting the river, going through Little Falls, it would be nice to have a nice dining place out there, and we've heard the same story over and over, where you can sit out and watch the sunset and have a steak with your wife. So, I agree on the part about dining, I think it's got to be a quality dining place, and that discussion has taken place. I would be against a referendum for it, or a vote of the public. I don't think that's needed, I think we're decision-makers, and we should be able to make that decision, so that's it.
How quickly make that decision concerning the community center then?
Because the legislature will allow us.
That's a difference.
Council President, so, Prince John. To answer Councilmember Prochek's question, because we're asking for a revenue source that needs to be authorized, but, so, the local option sales tax, this is not using a local option sales tax revenue source, this is using revenue that we've already designated to be used at the golf course. And so, this isn't asking for new revenue, it's revenue that we're already allocating to. To comment to Councilmember Lundberg, I agree, I want a plan for how it's going to operate. I, and I, I don't, I'm not certain of how to go about asking for that with knowing what I have, or what we have for a facility, or without knowing what we potentially could get for a facility. You know, the, I guess, the direction that I've been, I've been working on this project has been on the desire from those that want to give, to see an event center that can serve this quantity of people. And we're running into a problem where that scope of project is outside of our existing budget. So, you know, without, this would be, I would say, the last, at that scope of project, the last effort that I would fall through with, in identifying if this project could be built within that budget, or we would either look at changing the scope of the project, or finding additional revenue sources. At that time, you know, you're looking at something, something much, you know, different. I'm not saying that this would be the right fit for a local option sales tax utilization, but certainly, the struggle that we've had has been along those lines. We have a desire for a facility based on input from people in the community, and we have a cost for that project that, without going into a formal, full-fledged bidding process, we have determined that that doesn't fit in that market. Now, the bidding process certainly could get us there, but I don't know for certain that it would. But we also need to answer the operation question, because certainly, building something like this is going to be operated entirely differently than what we're currently operating for clubhouse now. And operations for the clubhouse now, I admit, are not, we're not in, we're not meeting the full potential for that physical location, but that building that it's in right now is not serving us very well to take advantage of the physical location, too. So, we're in a balancing act with that.
John, don't you think that if you realistically look at some numbers as far as cash flow projections, I know that it's a guess, but it's an educated guess. You base those numbers on what other golf courses are doing, and what other restaurants are doing, and what other bars are doing. And if you can look at those numbers realistically and say, "Wow, you know what, we can generate $800,000 a year in revenue, or 100, you know, a million five in revenue for meals and liquors sold," then don't you think that would increase your budget for spending? I mean, the more potential you have to make, the more you can spend on the building, right?
Depending on what the operating cost of the building are, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
Right, and that's what we have to look into.
So, all of that, and you know, we're, we won't have to bring into consideration once, if we're leasing it to a private entity, then there are property tax implications that, that, it's an effect. If we lease public space to a private entity, property taxes are them generated, and that has to be accounted for and something. You know, I'm also trying to balance too, there are operations of the golf course on the course, and equipment needs that they have, to keep that portion of the business operating as well, because it's part of that facility, and it will always be. That's, the land was given to us in an effort, so that it could always be operated as a golf course. So, there's, you know, we have to, we have to take that into account as well, and you know, there's a lot we have in it. So, if that's, I guess, the direction that you want to see us go, we will work towards that, and identifying those cash flows, I think there would need to be some level of participation, or some level of study done to understand what is the best operating thing. I don't know if it's a request for proposals from vendors, if it's a franchisees holder, or a chef, or a restaurateur that's going to come in and operate the facility for us, I know there's other communities that do that, with their golf course, golf courses. You know, it's something that, yes, we've talked about, we've considered, and we don't, I guess, looking for the direction of where to go from the council, and whether or not we're going to have resources available to us to make a best estimate. Really trying to come up with a plan, and a lot of consideration of not throwing good money after that, and running down rabbit holes that we know aren't, you know, going to be achievable. So, I guess that's where I don't have the answer.
Mr. President, maybe this might be a good prospect to set up a committee with people from the donating committee, people from the public, people from the city, to sit down and look at what the options are, and move it through a committee, instead of us sitting up here and trying to debate what should be done and what shouldn't be done.
Is this plan here mostly just for a restaurant and a bar?
It has a banquet facility, kitchen, bar area, yes. That would be the...
Eating place, where you have a bar or eating place.
Yeah, you'd be able to have a dining restaurant facility within it. This is not the, because of the physical aspects of the site, putting a walkout basement on it would be the most strategic, I guess, most efficient means. The basement area would be completely, virtually completely unfinished, I mean, you'd have mechanicals down there, but there wouldn't be any budget for, excuse me, finishing off the basement facility. So, this is primarily your upper level, to operate it as a restaurant with banquet facility and bar area.
And again, if the banquet in the restaurant is generating income, then some of that income could go towards putting in locker rooms and shower rooms later, or whatever we do down there.
Well, how long have we been discussing this? A couple of years? And I think we know what we want.
As far as the building.
It's just getting them off, as far as the building, it's just how we go about it, not, okay, this, this, we have an idea of that, it's just what's the process, is what you're asking for, what's the plan there?
Yeah, we need a plan. We know what we want, now, what are we going to do with it? When will we get it?
Sorry, okay, at the time, I'd like to go on to the developers agreeing the policy.
I think, Council President, we've had some recent interest from a developer, you know, looking to establish some property in a developed area of Little Falls. In the past, we are, and we still have enacted policy on a development agreement. There's been some success in some, I guess, properties that didn't develop amongst that agreement, and we just wanted to bring it to your attention that these things are going to be coming forward. Most recently, actually, it was contacted from the county, they are putting up some tax forfeited properties up for auction. One of the parcels in town that has a lot of these tax forfeited properties is the South Oaks area. That was part of one of our development agreements, and that project took place back in 2006, yes, 2006 and '07. At the time, about half of the properties were developed, and a couple came a little bit later, so there's 17 currently tax forfeited properties on there, with still outstanding assessments at about $19,000 for those properties. So, each $19,000 per lot, which covers the, you know, it's, that, in the developer's agreement, it was, it's full pass, it's 100% loss of the construction, so they're paying for all the utilities and infrastructure that go into creating that property. We're just creating a time period in which they can, the developer can pay us back in order to have those properties constructed with proper infrastructure, with the city and our standards that we have. So, nothing to bring forward, other than just bringing it to your attention, we wanted to be, have acknowledgement of it, and just kind of was timely in align with the inquiry from the county about those lots that happen to be part of the developer's agreement passed, and where we did, we did put those full assessments on.
Administration staff, John.
We recently, we're given notice from two of our admin staff that they will be leaving employment with the city, they're interested in moving to another part of the country, and without a specific timeline for when that's going to be, we are, we are interested in filling those positions, both, and would like to do so with as much advanced warning and lead time as we can, knowing the hiring process that we've just been through takes a couple of months, usually in the minimum, to find quality candidates. We'd like to get started on that as soon as possible, so we would be bringing forward our job description likely at the next meeting for approval, and then potentially advertising. At the best-case scenario, we would love it if we'd have some crossover time between those employees, but without exact dates, we don't know what that's going to be, so really, we're, we want to be as proactive with the situation as we can, getting someone here and in a little bit of those positions.
Set strategic planning meeting in June.
This is another idea that's come up, I, this discussion with the golf course is kind of a prime example of the event center. We've had, and you know, going back to last year with the community center, we've had a lot of, kind of some bigger ideas, you know, big activities that have come up, ideas that are coming up with our comprehensive plan work that we're doing, other events and aspects that are going on. The city will have the community meeting with the local foods, local places in June, 24th to 25th, facilitated by USDA, talk about how local food's going to be, impact our community in an economic development way, specifically in our downtown area. So, we have a lot of these stakeholder idea gathering, there's, there are things happening in our community that we want to, that we want to see accomplished, and we're, I would say, at this point, we're at staffing direction, unsure about how to move forward at some times, and we'd like some council direction on where to take different initiatives and different ideas. There are really three components to this meeting that I would be asking that we address. One being those facilities, notably, what do we have for city facilities, what do we have for needs in terms of, you know, renovating facilities or maintaining facilities, or are we looking at long-term plans of replacing facilities and combining with others, or reducing, or expanding? You know, really giving us, giving ourselves a good plan, and opportunity to really build up the budgets for those, for that work and that initiative, so that we can be good stewards of the city dollar, and plan those in accordingly with our budget, so that we know what they're going to, what's going to take place. So, that's a key component of this meeting, back to the previous item, admin staffing. This is something that, you know, really, we were put in a position where this is, certainly wasn't what we were planning for this year, however, we do know, looking at our staffing levels, looking at the age and experience of our employees, that we're going to have retirements coming forward, and having that input about how do we want to be able to plan for that transition of one employee to another. You know, we don't like the situations where we had long-term, last year where we suffered, where we had a lot of long-term outages of leave of employees for various reasons, but if we can, if we know somebody's, if we anticipate that somebody's going to be retiring, and we anticipate that somebody might be leaving, we want to be able to be active as we can, as proactive as we can, to address, you know, filling those positions if needed. We're in a position where we, I believe that we are fully, we're fully staffed, and there's, there isn't a whole lot of areas where we're looking at attrition. I know in the past, and you know, a decade ago, when I was, I just started in the profession, that was absolutely the strategy that a lot of cities had to incorporate, and a lot of long-term staff had a lot of budget shortfalls, budget cuts with the recession, and that was something that we really, that was a strategy that you really needed to take into account and utilize. However, for us, we're, you know, we've just added an administration position, which has been extremely beneficial for us, and we have a great hire with that, with Michaela, and it's giving us an opportunity to be, take on some more proactive efforts with our employees, and that would be another aspect of input that I'd like to be looking for from the council, of how do we want to be addressing this? Are there opportunities that we can build in our budget if we have enough advanced warning, that we can have a little bit of overlap, so we have that long-term employee that's leaving, with the time for the new one that's starting, and be able to share that, their knowledge about that job and roles? The other piece too, is looking at how do we, how are we even identifying employees? You know, we've been discussing this as department heads, specifically around the water and wastewater treatment operators, that ideally, we want to see a long, the ideal pool of those employees are as treatment operators, not as one specifically for wastewater, one specifically for water. We want to build in that redundancy and crossover for these employees, so that they can, they can serve both facilities, and do so in a very competent way. You know, right now, that takes a, that'll take a lot, long effort, take a couple of years of planning and development to actually get those, all of those employees into that, into that level, but it's something that we certainly want to consider, and we certainly want to be mindful of how that's going to, that's going to play out in the staffing levels through the future. And lastly, it's just around some of the concerns and issues that have been brought up in our meeting, or discussions that we have, both in the work session and in the regular meeting. You know, I think it's a good opportunity for us to have that opportunity to say, "How are we going to just..." how are we gonna just structure our meeting? What are, what's our procedures look like? So that everybody has a, a firm awareness of, of what it is and we're not just making assumptions about, well, this is how we've always done things, so this is the way it's gonna happen. You know, if there's a, if there's a different way or a better way and a way that we all can, can agree on of how to just have the process for the meeting. I don't presume that everybody's gonna agree on all of the, you know, the action items that are happening and, and everybody's gonna have their, their inputs and opinions on, on what it is. But we all should have a very firm understanding of how it is that we want the meeting. And I, I just would wanna create an opportunity for us to, to have that discussion during this time. So, so looking at, um, wanting to get that established and, and, and operate it or get that meeting scheduled, uh, and, and to take place sometime in June. Best case scenario, if, for my involvement, is between the two meetings because the final, final week in June, I will be, um, busy, uh, out of the office most of the week for that local food, local places meeting. And it's on Monday, Tuesday, and then the week conference is the best.
John, this would be discussion and no action?
Yeah, discussion only. If there are action items, we'd be bringing it forward as a, as a regular session.
How long of a meeting are you thinking? An hour, two hours, or three hours?
Um, I would, I would lean towards, you know, giving ourselves two hours. Just, uh, I, I really wanna take, for facilities-wise, I really wanna take like, you know, give some awareness of all the facilities that we have and whether or not we have a plan for them, whether or not we need to make some immediate address, you know, short-term, long-term, uh, plans of action for, for care and maintenance of those facilities or if, if the strategy really is gonna be, uh, long-term replacement.
I'd like to see it open on the back end because if we get in, we could discuss some of those things. Well.
You'd be surprised how many can get.
Actually, no, I do.
Yeah, four very important items.
But I'm fine with you doing it. I just can't make it up to you about it. I'm sorry, was that, it's in the mail, it's Tuesday. Tuesday the week after our first meeting. It's on the night I have the meeting.
Friday the tenth?
Mornings are afternoon.
I really, whatever, I, whatever works for the council, I will.
Well, for me, bookending the week works best. Either at the beginning of the week or at the end of the week. That way, it frees up the middle of the week for the job that I have that pays my bills and I need to travel frequently.
Friday the tenth?
John?
I can't, I mean, we, uh.
I won't be wrong. Would you have kind of an outline of the things that, okay, so we won't be coming into here blindside or?
No, I would be providing, especially on the facilities, I'm gonna provide you the, the list of all the facilities that have estimated ages, anything that we know is a planned improvement. And then, you know, what, what we do have in our long-term capital plan for, to, to be addressed. Obviously, with the waste plant, that's, uh, you know, that's gonna be, uh, a lot of that's gonna take care of itself. But we did some major work on the water treatment plant. But we have some major plans and, and things that need to, need to happen with that facility. You know, the city hall itself and the police department, both which are, are aged and, and, um, facilities that aren't, I, I wouldn't say optimal, uh, for our operations, but we're making them work. We do have a fairly new street department building, but, and that too, we need to be planning for the major maintenance, uh, things that are gonna be coming along with that. It's, you know, ten years old.
Let's pick a date, because we're, um, seven twenty-three. Thursday works.
Thursday the thirteenth?
I thought that was in April.
Well, it, it is what it is, scheduled a meeting yet.
I put in the evening on the thirteenth.
Well, it would be nice to be here. But what I'm saying is, with the nature of my work is very reactionary. I can't, I just can't plan that far ahead.
Me too.
Wednesday?
Wednesday the twelfth, or that's. And evenings don't work for me, I'm working.
I would say for, for me, Fri, the Fridays are, are very tense. They're both wide open.
Middle of the afternoon after Friday?
Monday the seventh.
Fourteenth in the morning or afternoon?
Mentioned the seventeenth. Around that works for other people, I'm off that day, so that works.
Either one of those. But they're both at the end in the beginning, so I can make that work.
Same thing is common.
No, it is.
Yeah, but we, so you could do two in the afternoon and four in the morning, two to four, one to three. Or the fourteenth afternoon.
But there's no other meetings on Fridays, hell typically, so you're not bumping into any other stuff. I, I mean, Friday the fourteenth would work great for me and I could do it anytime.
Friday the first Thursday.
Fourteenth is good, it'd be morning, afternoon, whatever time it is.
Three, I don't know whether, take a time, I don't know that I'll be able to come on my own. Most people can.
Well, can most people come on Monday the seventeenth? You can't come on Monday.
I can make that work too.
Most days are.
You wanna get one o'clock?
That would work. I, I can do that.
Monday to seventeen?
One o'clock?
Mine for one to three?
Okay. Yeah. This is dirty pizza, it's gay.
And it's seven twenty-five, any constituent complaints? I had one I wanted to bring up because I've had a couple of people contact me about yards that are whole parking lots. I don't know if they're licensed, if it follows our policy or if you can fill your car with cars. But I said I would bring it up.
I have two constituent things about properties that are, one guy's writing this, Scrappy Alley in this yard, uh, like, I think, the third and fourth stuff, west. And then, on Linder Drive, you know, there's a house that's got blue tarponing, it's had a blue tarponing. I think tore down three quarters of the house, but left a piece of it there and the whole wall was nothing but a blue tarpon.
I, I did get that complaint from Cal as well and I spoke with the building inspector and, and there, it's not all of her clients. There's a couple of people living in the house and there, it's.
Uh, Mr. President, I got complaints on the house, on, with the house on stilts over here and, um, a cave over here. And then also that one on northeast, um, that we had the issue with the garbage. There's a bunch of garbage there, you know, that we can go down. And garage door is open about this far and you can see bags, uh, garbage bags.
That property is now in port closure?
Oh, is it?
Yes. So, it will be more difficult this time too.
Will it turn to our seven thirty meeting?